I don't know what else to say.
Seventeen more chairs?
The changes, they said a change within the changing of the whole room in your stomach. And that fact, obviously, is what I'm saying. On Saturday, we're down for concerts, Northfield Park, all the way out to the work front.
You want help when we're good, Jim? Are we good? Oh, you're asking the questions, okay. Well, I'd like to welcome you all here tonight. This is our second Q and A that we're going to have. And we'd really like you to write out your questions on postcards so that we can be efficient in answering them. And if we don't get to them, because we do have to quit at seven or by seven, then we can get back to you by email, especially if you put your email on there. So that'd be really helpful. So Kathy's going to be picking them up and she's going to read them off. And I guess whatever board members are here will give our two cents about the questions. Hopefully, we'll help you to, we'll solve some problems for you or answer some things that you're concerned about. Okay. So. Go ahead. How many minutes are you getting? Well, you're not, as short as possible so we can answer as many questions as possible. Yeah, so, yeah, we'll see. There's not a time limit, you know. Yeah.
So the goal is to have a conversation. So what it is, is that, you know, ask your question, we'll answer it. And then, you know, if you have a follow-up, ask that, and then we'll open it up for the rest of the people to ask if they have any follow-ups on it. So it's really to have dialogue as opposed to just yes, no, stuff like that.
Okay. Hello? First question. How many voting members live outside the area serviced by sewers? For residents on well and septic, what benefits can I expect to see from tax on sewers? How many board members live outside the sewer district? Yeah, Jackie and Janet are on it, on sewer. And Mr. Dockett, so three are on sewer. Yeah, and four are not. What's the next question? Oh, sorry. Three board members are on the sewer system and four are not. And the other part of the question is... What benefits will the septic and well, for residents on well and septic, what benefits can I expect to see from a tax on sewers? If you're not on the sewer district, if you're well and septic, you don't get a sewer bill, so you're not getting taxed on anything and you won't get a bill. Right.
But I think your proposal is to have the whole township pay for this expanded tax required for the management source.
No. No. Okay.
Last meeting, the question was general obligation bonds or revenue bonds you were considering. And so if there was general obligation bonds, then the people, the whole township would be actually supporting, in case there was a financial issue with the township, would be on the hook for whatever the obligation is. Where revenue bonds, only the sewer users would be on the hook.
That's true. General obligation bonds is the full faith and credit of the township. The township has not ever defaulted on a general obligation bond however. Only the people who are on well and, who are on the wastewater treatment plant system would be paying for the expansion by way of the equalization basin. And I did a little calculation. I expect it will cost each resident about $100. Depending, if we go with the revenue bond, it'll be about $103 a year more. If we go with a general obligation bond, it'll be $92 a year more. So that's why I said, well, let's do a general obligation bond. It's highly, highly unlikely that the township would ever default on that. And it would be cheaper for everybody who's on the system. I don't have a problem going the other route either, but we do need an equalization basin.
So my comment is, yes, I'm not on the sewer, first of all, but I am one for the revenue bonds. I think the people that are using the service should pay for the service. And this is, my understanding, this is just the start. We need the equalization base. And next, we're going to have to improve the lines. And then after that, eventually, you're going to have to get a new sewer or improve your sewer. So I think it's prudent to charge and do a revenue bond. Because the other question I'd like to know is, what's the difference in our total bond rating if we issue a revenue bond versus a general bond funding as well? And I don't think that has been asked, answered. So what Marlene, Madam Supervisor is indicating is that it's going to be about $11 more if we were to do a revenue bond over a general bond. But the risk stays with the people getting the service.
None of these three people are on the sewer that's voting for this.
We admit it to that.
And only the people that's on the sewer should pay, as far as I'm concerned. And that's why I think the bond is wrong.
What I was wondering is if people that are on the septic system currently, are they ever going to be on that sewer system taking full advantage of what we paid for?
Could we ever get on the sewer?
I think it's going to be a long time. For my personal, I hope it is a long time. I mean, I like my septic, but there's sewer districts. So if the sewer district expands, then I would have to pay the connection fee. So that's about $6,000 to now connect, because that's the connection fee. And then I would start paying the user fees. If I were on the sewer and if I became a new customer, so, yeah, yeah, so.
Did you have a follow-up?
Yes. The sewer system benefits Green Oak and Northfield. So under a revenue bond, Green Oak would be paying as well? That's, okay.
On a revenue bond, it would, again, everybody on the sewer, when the sewer basin is expanded, their user fees will go up or are built. The difference between a revenue bond and a general obligation bond is what is guaranteed from the township. So if it were to default, then everybody in the township would be charged for any default. If it stays a revenue bond, then the people using the service on the sewer would have to pick up the difference. Yes. Yes, yes. If they're on the sewer, on our sewer, yes, they would. Yep.
Need to be a public hearing in the case of a revenue bond or a vote or anything? How does that work?
Oh, yeah. There's a whole series of things we need to do to make sure everybody knows. And we'll be sending out a postcard. There will be a public hearing before the board would actually vote to go ahead with bonding.
For either type of...
For either type, yeah.
Is this before or after or in consideration at the same time with the retention bond that you're talking about that's going to be millions? The big thing about by the digging the hole.
It's the same thing.
Is it the same thing?
The retention basin, yeah. The equalization basin, retention basin, it's all one thing.
Okay, the retention basin, I understand, for holding excess groundwater and whatever else. But I understood that there was conversation about some of the lines are going to have to be brought up to date or replaced, that kind of thing. That's not in this consideration?
Uh-uh, no.
When is that coming around?
When it's needed. We do have some studies done on the flows in the different lines that go to the wastewater treatment plants. Some of them are at capacity or very near capacity. So we will need to be doing some expansion of some of those lines. I can't predict, yeah, a couple, I would think it's in the relative near future. Especially the one that goes under Barker, under US 23 at Barker Road. That one is very much at capacity at this point.
Why are we paying for the, let me see, in general, for the extension of the sewer when this is, I believe, for the new development in the North Park, correct? No? So, but a correction to the sewer fee? It is in general maybe $6,000, but the sewer fee, or let me see, the connection fee and everything for the sewer is depending on the size of the property. And it can be very, very expensive, very expensive.
The connection fee is $6,255 right now. Per tap, yeah. That's what it is right now. So if any house gets built in the system, I mean, in the sewer district, that's what their tap would be.
No, it's not correct. It, that's the tap. But the entire fee for this, for the property, is by the size of the property.
Oh, that's already been assessed, yes. We've already expanded, you know, sent lines down North Territorial. The lines have already gone down Whitmore Lake Road, which is why you're getting stuck with a bill every year, I believe, for a significant amount of money because of that particular line that went through.
Why didn't, after you decided on housing, send out a questionnaire to the public about what they like and don't like and what they want as the master plan was changed? So I'm assuming that you're talking about the park.
I want to know, okay, we had a master plan.
We had a master plan. And you looked over the master plan and decided at some point that the way that was laid out wasn't exactly the way you wanted it to be and started looking at other avenues. And we went pretty much from, forget any kind of business going to be there, to having basically housing. It's pretty much housing up there, 90 units. And I want to know, when you changed your mind to go to 90 units, why you didn't send out like you did with the master plan? And if you read the master plan, you could go on the internet and look it up and read everything that's on there. They sent out questionnaires with 30 questions on several pages, wanting to know how the people felt, why they were wanting it that way and that kind of thing. And on every one of them that I read, there was at least three or four answers that said, "We want to have a recreational laid area with waterfront." But that is not anything near 90 homes that you're putting up there. Okay, so I wanted to know why that wasn't done. And then the other question that goes behind it is, why didn't you just start it all over and run it as another master plan and bring it to the public like you did the first one? So we would know what's going on.
My first reply on that is, I mean, we've been working on the synthesis plan for at least three and a half years. And we had, we...
What do you mean, what? An adjustment to?
What we wanted to do with that property. Through the planners, through the township, we've had work sessions, we've had meetings, we've had surveys. And we are still keeping a waterfront park. And we're still in negotiations for it, so.
But that is completely different to what was originally planned. And so when you're changing the whole concept from what was originally planned, I think you should let the people know, we're changing this format and this is what we're predicting or what we're producing to you to take your consideration of. And do it just like you did the first master plan. And have questionnaires and have, get the response back from the people before you go ahead, like this is going to be approved.
Again, it's not approved. And this isn't a master plan and this fits into the master plan, so.
But if the other night, it had been ready and Mr. Fink had said, "Yeah, everything looks great," you could have signed that night.
Not necessarily.
You could have, that's what I said. And we would have been stuck with it without any approval.
So if I can add a comment. This is in the master plan and I'm not for the 90 houses, because it doesn't provide mixed use. It doesn't provide a gathering place. And I say we should, we need to, it is incorporated. It's called the North Village Plan, which was approved and is in the master plan. And I think it's very key to ensure, to have success, is that you plan and you go towards those plans. 90 houses isn't going to invite me down to a park that I'm paying taxes for just general taxes. I think it's a good plan. And if, we need to work harder to get a developer that wants to get very close to that plan. And you're right, I think if we're going to really change it, like to me we did, we should have notified everybody to come back and get your input. Because this is, that's, I think, why most of you might be here. So I think, I think we need, we need to hear from our residents. Because the board, on a five to two decision, said to continue to negotiate with the developer for the 90 houses. I was one of the persons that said no, because I think at a minimum, we should let you know. And we need mixed use, we need to have a gathering, we need to have a vibrant downtown. And I think that will just never allow that to happen.
To the township to purchase, does anybody know the story behind that of what they were hoping would happen with the property? I mean, the original owner of the property, when it was made available to the township, I was wondering what their hopes were for that property. I'm not from the area originally, so I'd kind of like to know what the story was behind that.
Mr. Van Kurler, that was zoned for Planned Shopping Center for a long, long time. And it didn't sell for the amount of money that he wanted for the land. And then through some negotiations, as he was getting older, he decided to sell it to the township for a steal. No?
No. So the property was up for sale for probably close to 20 years for $4 million. And so when Mr. Van Kurler passed away, his wife approached the township and asked the township if they would be willing to buy it. She wanted to get rid of it. So there were, has, and it wasn't always storefronts or anything. Between the LaFave property and the Van Kurler property, they always wanted to have some type of connection between the two properties. And there was always, you know, who's going to pay for it type thing. So it never happened. And you see what happened to the LaFave property, which is over on the Eight Mile Road, that's blank, and the one, the 20... It's a brownsville. So it is billable and it is up for sale now because Mr. LaFave has also passed away.
For $3 million, if anybody wants to buy it.
That's one person's opinion. As far as I know, he wanted the township to have that property. That was his wish. That's why the price was $330,000. So I think, and as far as I know, when we were doing it, I was on the board, it was bought as just a park. That's all that was going to be there, as far as I can remember. And I was on the board, so that's my say.
We have multiple questions on the park, so I guess if we want to, if you want to ask your questions while we're on this.
Hi, one of my questions about the park is, with a park having a road on either side, it's no longer a park, it's a boulevard. And you are not going to want your kids playing in the center of two roads that are going to go back and forth. And when I was on a downtown planning group that got disbanded, there was eight to 10 acres that were supposed to be set aside for the park of continuous acres, not counting what's on the west side of the road that's along the lake. So why don't you stop the developers from wasting their money? And just say, listen, give us the park, give us our eight to 10 acres, let us do what we want, and then give them the balance and say, here, you get to develop this. Stop wasting developers' money. They come up with all these plans and then later on you say, oh, by the way, we need eight to 10 acres for a park. Because by the time you get them putting in a dog park in there and a children's playground into the park, there's going to be no room with five acres for anything else. That doesn't come anywhere near what this township had originally talked about doing with that park. And now you keep getting these developers more and more property. And now at this point, with the 90 homes, we're only getting five acres for a park. And that's nowhere near enough.
Okay, that's still under negotiation. And it, we, the houses may not materialize, it may end up being a little more similar to this, where we've got another developer who wants to provide some thoughts and ideas for that area. So this isn't written in stone, but this was the plan that got put into the master plan. And it was adopted. So we will see what we can do that approaches this, or it'll just sit vacant. And, you know, so we'll see.
And as far as I know, the five acre park, the ingress and egress, there's three of them, is coming out of that, five acres. That's all to get 200 cars. Four, there's about 90 units, two cars a unit, get them in and out every day. A lot of our property is going to be taken up with drive with a road that's going across the park.
Hi, I'm Sue Schenk. I'm your Washtenaw County Commissioner. I'm also a Northfield Township resident and a former trustee, but from 2004 to 2008. So now I'm speaking, I'm going to speak as your county commissioner. And yesterday, we had a meeting with some staff from parks, Coy Von, the Director of Parks, and Megan Montbiglio, Deputy Director of Washtenaw County Parks and Recreation. And Marlene Chalkley, Lenore Zelenok, and Sami Quinto were there. And we talked about some of the possibilities of county assistance in this process and some thoughts about the situation in general. And the county doesn't have the resources to just like make it all happen. But what the county can do is provide some sort of guidance and connections in terms of looking into the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund. There's a deadline coming up April 1st, so that's something that would happen next April 1st, right? But that's a possibility and we're going to try to get some conversations to happen sooner rather than later to see what kind of state funding there might be. They're particularly interested in waterfront development. There's another, the Ralph Wilson, who had participated in Kaboom. And some other possibilities. And the reason that I'm talking about that is to say that a lot of times, the conversation has been around, how do we make a park happen, being a township of limited means? And so those are some possibilities. And just to say there's some technical assistance there. And then the other thing that was an interesting conversation is that there's another park being built in Ann Arbor, near the Cascades, at the old DTE site, which is a brownfield. And there's a developer, the Roxbury Group, who's putting in quite an extensive and fancy park. It's in a way similar to this, but a different scale, right? And so what Coy Von talked about, because he's been involved in these conversations, is to say that he, when he looked at the North Village synthesis plan, he thought it was a good plan. What he thought didn't make a lot of sense was maybe Livonia Builders' approach to this plan, to say, we're going to build 90 houses, not follow the plan. And he suggested and encouraged that Northfield Township stick to the plan. And say, hey, we've got this plan, we're looking for a developer to help us make it happen. And then Coy was also able to offer some other assistance in terms of connecting Northfield Township with an appraiser. There hasn't been a formal appraisal done of the property. And so to suggest, hey, you could get an appraisal of the property and make sure you're fully aware of the value of the property before you start negotiating a price. And also to get maybe some connection with the Roxbury Development Group. And if they're not interested in developing here, that maybe they could give us some friendly guidance and assistance in what can you really expect out of a developer? Because it looked like Livonia Builders really wasn't respecting our plan. And then also the idea of connecting with a park planner to make sure that we have the best advice possible. And so really going about this in a very professional and structured way so that we can make sure that we have the best possible plan with the county offering not money, but assistance and, and I say handholding is maybe not the most professional term, but in a sense, walking the walk with us. And so I don't know if anybody who was there wants to add on to that. To me, it sounded good. It sounded like something that, as a resident, I could get behind, even if maybe all the details weren't things that I was excited about, at least I would know that the process was protecting our interests as a community.
Yeah, I can add, I think that's a good way to put it, you know, walk the walk with us. I think sometimes we get enclosed where we don't take advantage of all the resources, such as Washtenaw County. And obviously, if you look at your tax bill, you'll see that we pay them a lot of taxes. So it's good to use their expertise and they're very good at doing parks. That's one of the cities known for. So I think reaching out to them and, you know, better late than never, probably should have done it three years ago, but can't go back, can only go forward, is, I think, a good, a good first step in walking with them, because they do have a lot of resources that they can help us along this item. Because again, as I say it, I'm not for 90 houses. I think that's a waste of space.
Next? Okay. I do want to say one thing about Livonia Builders. They, I don't think they disrespected our plan. We had a building committee that worked with them, came up with what they came up with. We gave some requirements of what needed to be in that plan and they provided it. So I think saying that they disrespected our synthesis plan is rather strong. I think you have to look at a synthesis plan as this, is that it's just a plan.
I think you have to look at a synthesis plan as this, is that it's just a plan. And as any type of plan that you have in building your house, or building, or repairing your house, you adjust sometimes to what is available to you, based on money, based on what is real.
You're saying three and a half years, we're wasting on that?
We've been doing this longer than three and a half years. This has been going on probably for about five years.
So, they said worked on the plan for three and a half years, then put it out there for developers.
Yeah. The synthesis plan has been for three years. We also had vision sessions for this, open to the public, to provide input. So, that's what I'm saying, is there is time that people had an opportunity to provide input.
You're either talking about, hoping for, or expecting to have new people join the township, so you're gonna have to not say it was available publicly three years ago. We're talking about today.
No, what I'm saying is, the synthesis plan started three years ago, and part of that synthesis plan was doing vision sessions that were open to the public, to publicly provide input into this plan. That's what it was.
I've got a quick question.
Go ahead. Just, real quick, maybe it's time to have another public input session. Oh, well, I mean, actually, focus on this, this is more. I get it, but.
We're not getting communication. I know you're saying you're telling us, but you can see, we're not here.
First, I'd like to thank County-
I understand that.
I'd like to thank County Commissioner Schenk for coming, we appreciate it very much. My name is Ken Dignan, I'm on the Whitmore Lake Board of Education, I have been for the last six years. Certainly, the members of the board and the school are excited about a prospect of homes. It is important. Having been somewhat engaged in this from day one, when the Van Kurler estate worked with the then Township manager to sell the property at essentially a fire sale price to the township, there was a lot of discussion about the township utilizing that property as a redevelopment tool, and a great majority of it being a park at the time. And, you know, I appreciate Livonia Builders' contributions to this, and I do support development of the property. I do have a concern, though, and my concern is this, looking at the current layout of our downtown, and the current available real estate that would be there for any kind of commercial or retail development that would drive people to downtown, we lack that. We lack the ability to support that growth. While we might be able to fit one or two establishments here or there, we don't have the commercial aspect of it. And what I would like to see is, if the township's gonna continue to work with Livonia Builders to emphasize to them that there needs to be a mixed-use component, a retail component of some sort, an ability to have that, and work with them. I mean, that type of a development can potentially bring in greater dollars for lower investment for them, therefore, maybe it can free up a few acres. Maybe you go with something that has two-thirds of the homes, and some sort of retail presence, hopefully roadside, roadfronted, walking in front of. You know, I would really like to see you guys, as our representatives on the board, to go to Livonia Builders, since they have been engaged, and they haven't said this is the final thing. Say, guys, look, the original RFP for this had that in there. It wasn't just come and build retail, come and build homes on this property. So, I mean, let's talk to them, and if we don't come to something that is supportive of all those things, you know, I, yeah, let's not, you know, I mean, I don't wanna say we've spent five years to rush into something right now, and we're not rushing by any means, it's been long, but it's worth a conversation with them. I mean, are they open to that? I don't know if any of you have had conversations with Livonia Builders. Are they open to looking at something different?
They were, when they came to us, they had intended to do some commercial on the front. This is, this was zoned for mixed use, with retail on the bottom floors, and apartments above, or, you know, loft apartments. And it, we were planning on having more commercial. Livonia Builders does houses, and so, they don't necessarily have the capacity or the ability to do the commercial end of it, and they were hoping to join with someone else to do the commercial end of it, but they have not. So, so it's incomplete in that, in that regard. I think we can do better, if we, if we are patient, I, but we need to, I wouldn't say start over, but improve our negotiation with the current builder, or perhaps attract some other builders that could be more similar to the synthesis plan that the community had developed.
I'm wondering how many people in this room are a little bit distressed with the plan as it currently is, and would like to see maybe something different get developed? I've been a resident, I'm a relative newcomer in this area, I've only been here since 1980. And that's just about long enough not to be a newcomer in my neighborhood, because all the farms around me are subsequent centennial farms. But I've been in this community for a while, and I know that there has been a general consensus on innumerable occasions that we want green space, that we want less of a focus on, on major development, and more of a focus on keeping the rural atmosphere of our township. I just get the feeling a lot of people are really distressed with this plan, and I think if this has been going on for five years, that the input that you've had over that five years has to be, at least in some part, people wanting to see a little more green space, people wanting to have a little more parks and recreation. I mean, part of the reason I never go downtown is there's nothing there for me to do. There is no public, we have two lakes in this township, and we have access to none of them. And there's, there's no, there's no draw. There's, there were public beaches, and when there were public beaches, if you look back in the history of this community, there were railroads coming up from Ann Arbor, there were railroads coming from Toledo and Detroit, bringing people in to be on our lake. And that's the kind of stuff that we really need right now. I think, if I could just see a hands, who's distressed with this plan as it shows right now? And this is just so that you have an idea of where people stand who are here in the meeting, because not everybody's gonna have a chance to speak.
I just wanna say that originally, I was kind of happy about a possibility of senior housing, because I thought that maybe the seniors, who are paying a lot of tax dollars in our township, would be able to sell their homes and live comfortably in an apartment for however long they happen to be around. And, but it's, but then, all of the rest of this happened, and I don't like it. And I also want to mention the fact about a park, because when Howard Fink was the Township manager, and he negotiated to get the sale done for that property, there is a bench out in front of that property on Main Street that said, "Northfield Community", and it was originally supposed to be, "Northfield Community Park." That's my thought, thank you.
I just, I basically just wanna echo this gentleman's statement, I've lived here since 1983, and I have to say, as he said, there's not much, you know, there's no public access to the lake, it doesn't belong to Whitmore Lake. I'm sorry, I apologize. So, as one of the people who doesn't live in the town, there's sort of a separation, I perceive, between the people who don't live in the town, and the people who do live in the town, which I think's unfortunate. But I think it's partly because there's no public space in the town. And are we wedded to the idea that this park is only to be six acres, including the part that's adjacent to the lake, or can we now, can we change it and enlarge it at this point?
Nothing is concrete on this plan, and, I don't know, board members, do you wanna continue this, or do you wanna move on? I think we might have the consensus that we need a separate session, just on the park.
I think, gentlemen, I didn't catch your name, I think he has a great idea. We need to have a, we need to reengage the community.
Right.
And now, we're here, and we need to do a public reengagement on this. Because it's getting closer to happening, and people are saying, I'm not happy with it. So, we need to reengage our community. And I'm all for that, that we send out, how will we do that? We could send out a postcard, and say, come to this public hearing, or this meeting to talk about this.
Hi, my name is James Demore, and I'm sorry, I have to, have to report, I'm one of those people, now those trolls that live a town or so away, in the People's Republic of Ann Arbor. But I will disclaim that I was also a member of both the Parks Commission and the Planning Commission for the City of Ann Arbor. And I think I'm a little familiar in terms of the process that's here. I am going to say, I don't know what's going on in terms of what the township is negotiating with the builders and developers. I'd be very careful in terms of engagement, what are expectations? I think there may be some liabilities there. I'm not an attorney, I know from experience, when something's written on a plan, that very much becomes a reality going forward, because already a lot of dollars were spent trying to make that happen. But I wanna go to the broader question, just in terms of, I think, a lot of people I'm hearing here tonight really had expectations in terms of a park. It was almost as if a promise was made to the community, and to the future, that a public space would be provided. There isn't a lot of access for the public to Whitmore Lake. And for residents and neighbors that really wanna enjoy the community, but have no access to the lake, where are the, where are the choices? It seems to me that if it wasn't a promise, so only there's a strong expectation, it should be a robust park, being part of the North Park area. And I agree with you, I think you should engage. I think it's a decision you can only undo, you can make once, so do it right. And it sounds to me you need a robust park here, I think that's what was promised.
I have a follow-up question as well. My question is, I don't think it's any secret that Northfield Township has a reputation for being difficult for developers. There have been some history there, of folks being scared away, not wanting to develop here. So, my question is, if this plan isn't good enough, if you guys wanna reopen the synthesis plan, and reopen and reengage the public, I would support that, but my question is, what are you going to do in the future to remedy this problem of being difficult to develop? Because now, this property's been for sale for years, and now it's in negotiations, and now you're talking about starting the plan over again. So, my question is, what are you going to do in the future to keep that from continuing to happen?
One thing, someone mentioned an RFP, Request for Proposal. We sent out a request for proposal for this, that's not what we got back. If we wanted single-family homes, then our RFP, Request for Proposal, should have been for single-family homes. That's mine. We sent this, we didn't get it. So, I don't feel I'm being difficult as a board member. My expectation is, yeah. So, I think what we need is, we need one developer to come in here and develop something to spark us, and I think the world would be endless for us. We are just looking for that one, and I don't think they're it. That doesn't match our plan. The other thing is, we need to stick to our plans. We need one developer to spark us, and I think it'll be a waterfall, because we are a great township. We have an asset that no one else has around us. So, we need to use it to the best of our ability.
So, the one thing I do want to add is that Livonia Builders was not the only, our proposal that was out there. We had one from a previous one to do with senior housing, and they found out that there was senior housing being built in Hamburg, so they pulled out. And then, we had another one that wanted to develop apartments, and that would have doubled. We're talking, what, about 200? It would have been about 200 apartment building, 200, not 200 apartment buildings, but enough for 200?
200 units.
Units? Yeah, and it would have gone up. So, we're talking that that would have been more traffic. So, this is the third one that came to us, we've only had three. That's right, I'm not saying that it is. But the one question I wanna ask you is, how are you going to pick for a park?
We don't have car shows, we don't have any public events.
Yeah. This lot has been, has sat there for five years already, five, six years?
A lot of people don't even know the township, all people didn't have a lot of to use.
Yeah. Five years. Five.
You don't even know where possible.
Yeah, five, because we bought it when we were in, before.
And I think that's what you have to consider, is how are you gonna pay for the amenities for this park, and how are we going to pay for the maintenance?
The township instead of the city of Whitmore Lake.
That's, well.
That's what I see.
Yeah.
One of the years in 79, it's more, makes us Whitmore like the city of Whitmore Lake. What about the township people?
Well, and behind this building, there's 30 acres designated for a park. I know it's swamp, but it's land, it's land that we're preserving.
Not sure you're getting to my roots.
Yes. Is that it has to be the whole township.
I'd like, I'd like to tell you, I'd like to say one thing, please talk into the mic, nobody can hear you out there in TV land. That's the problem, that's why we like that. I cannot hear, I have a problem, I wear hearing aids. The only way I hear is if you talk into the mic, so please try to do that. As far as I'm concerned, we should keep all the park, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be in bed with any developers. We're not developers. We, we're making a big mistake anytime we get involved with these people. They're looking to get the property for nothing.
Okay. I think that-
Okay, I have a quick-
Two more comments, and then we're gonna move on.
I have a quick point. You're talking about, you've been talking for some time about the North Village Synthesis Plan. There's a lot of dreams on that plan, that you sent out and had people quote, and they didn't quote, and da-da-da-da-da. The one thing you haven't gotten is an opinion from the DNR, whether any of the waterfront stuff that you've got in your dream could become a reality. You haven't got an opinion from the MDOT, whether or not the roads you've got drawn on there would be, could become a reality. You can talk to the people that were on the board seven, eight years ago, about a dream that they were working on down on North Territorial, and they found out that MDOT said, somebody, the developer or the township's gonna have to come up with tens of millions of dollars of interchange work on the expressway to support that, or you can't have what you've drawn in your dream. Now, we need an opinion from MDOT, whether or not they would allow all those parking spots that close to a roundabout, that would cause people to get killed down on 23, running into the cars, waiting to get off, to go to your dream. MDOT's gonna say you can't have that. The Washtenaw County Road Commission told the Washtenaw County Parks Commission at the Township Planning Commission meetings regarding the Maple Hill Park, Nature Park, that they couldn't put the entrance where it is today, because it was too close to Nala Road, and too close to the curb in Seven Mile, and they said, you can't do a curb cut there. And the Parks Commission finally convinced them that we're only talking about a parking lot for four cars. And that's the only way they got it approved. If they had been talking about this, it wouldn't have happened. And I'll guarantee you right now, you take a ride down M36, and look what, now, granted it's in another county, but I don't think that county's as tough as Washtenaw County on terms of the power that the Drain Commission, and the Road Commission, and people like that carry. And that's what we've gotta deal with to make this happen. And that's what we've got to deal with to make this happen. And you can't make it happen without their approval. So instead of talking about a bunch of smoke in the air, you need to be talking to the people that are going to tell you whether or not this is even possible. We don't even know if this is possible. I don't think that it's possible to put that many parking spots that close to 23.
Can we, one more, one more quick, you're good?
I just had a really quick question. So I'm all for engagement, um, but more than once it's been mentioned that the community just didn't know when the meetings were, they didn't know what the schedule was, so on and so forth. So my question to the audience at large is, what is your preferred, how would you like those notices to come to the community? Are you Facebook? Is it the website? Is it mailers? How, what's the best way to get in touch with the community?
We do have a news.
Right, so we have to have multiple, we need to have, so email us. We have to have multiple ways of getting in touch with people. So I'm just sort of throw them out kind of thing.
We do have a township newsletter. If you send us your email, we can add you to the newsletter list. And we have a Facebook page. Yes, any of our meetings go out, okay, resend that to any of us at the township or to Jennifer Carlisle, and we'll get you on that list. We got to move on.
One of the, one of the points that I think I was hearing was that, um, there was a plan, and a lot of people are, are kind of upset because you brought in a builder who says, "Well, that's not what we do. Our forte is building houses. We don't build, um, stores." Well, the obvious answer to that is, if you can't build the stores and do the stuff and figure out a way to do it, then we, maybe we need to look again. Because changing it and saying, "Well, yeah, I know you guys wanted storefronts, and we wanted this and you wanted that, but we don't do that, and you don't have anybody else that'll go with it, so let's build houses," that's, just kind of makes a disaster out of everything. We're better off throwing the brakes on it than just saying, "There, we're going to fill this up with houses," and not get what we really wanted in the first place. You know, people are, were responding to the plans that they've already seen, and the scene, the plans did not include having a ton of houses and a tiny park. It was quite the opposite.
Next question. Can the township provide an update on the marijuana application review process? Does anyone have an update on that? Um, Stephen, our manager, might, but who is, not Gareth, we'll come back to that one.
Real quick, okay. My, my main comment from day one was to get notification out, that I didn't feel notification was going out. I think emails is a good way. I think cards, we've done before, are a good way. And word of mouth. Okay? Everybody hears something, tell it. So people know. Don't assume that your neighbor knows, because your neighbor may not know. The other thing is, from the original plan, I don't know if anybody looks at those things and wonders, "Where is east, west, and what, what is that?" But on the original plan, and I don't know after hearing this whether it's feasible, but they had talked about the roadway of Main Street, okay, being cut off by, right after the post office, and taking it and going up Barker, and going out to the expressway that way, behind the building stuff. So the parking would be back there. The parking would, I thought that looked like the lake up there. But anyway, so that the parking front polies could come over there also and we'd have park. And you're talking about, this was supposed to be an expansion for business. Okay? When I think of a beach and recreation, that's a business. And I've said from day one, I've lived here since 49, okay? And what brought people to this community was recreation, for parks, okay? And there were reasons why they've all left, and I'm not going to get into all of that. If you have a place on a beautiful lake where people can recreate, they're going to come. If they come and have fun, they're going to spend money. If they spend money and people who do businesses see that money's being spent, they're going to want to put a business there if they can. We were going to put businesses on the bottom, I understood, 20 units? And that on top of it would be lots for some, not many, but for some people to dwell in loss. So you've got hopefully some quaint kind of businesses that would draw some people off of the, go up and buy cards or, you know, wax flowers or whatever. Okay, you're going to take it from me. So think about it. Think about it.
Thank you, Fay. All the questions were either on park issues or wastewater. Oh, all of them? So, yes. Did anybody have a specific question? Anything else? Anything else?
Well, no, not on this.
Do you have another question, sir? You want to ask yours? This one?
Yes.
That's, no, that's Steve.
And, and really, I think, I see that, and just preface it with it, I don't think there needs to be discussion on it. I don't think there needs to be a discussion on the question. I'm raising the question. I think the board ought to consider both of those and maybe put together a task force. And if you want to read the question, the people get the idea of what I'm talking about. Can I just make a side thing here? I think town hall meetings are great, and I think you should probably schedule maybe one a quarter, and you should do it apart from this meeting, and maybe allow for two hours, and, and sort of focus on a topic, at least to begin with. I mean, this is a huge issue. It, it's going to affect a lot of people, and a lot of people want to talk about it. But in a town hall meeting, you really want to get as much input from people about different things, and then maybe set something aside for specific issues. And maybe even some of the questions that I asked there. Go ahead.
Right, no, I totally agree with you, and I don't think we are expecting this turnout. So, okay, so, can, can I read his question? Indeed, we were. Okay. The question was, "Has the board looked into any preparedness issues in regards to the community, city of Whitmore Lake concerning any possible adverse event that would or might impact us as a community? Examples are weather, electrical, health, et cetera, some kind of task force." And then the second part was, "Has the board ever addressed the impact of 5G technology might or will have on the health of us in Whitmore Lake?"
We, we operate in and with the Washtenaw County Emergency Operations Plan, and that gets reviewed annually?
Yeah, I think my question is a little more expansive than that. And while I understand that the fire department, police department probably has preparedness plans, the problem, I was going to wear my T-shirt tonight, but I decided not to. T-shirt says, "The strong survive, the prepared thrive." The problem is, is nobody is prepared for absolutely anything. And you think about what's going on in China right now, and, and what may be coming to the United States, and what's going on in Korea, and Italy, and whatever. It's not on anybody's radar screen because it's not in the mainstream media. But we need to be thinking individually, as well as collectively, what we need to do. I mean, if everybody is prepared, you have food, water, all that good stuff at home, you are prepared to self-quarantine. If you don't, you're going to be running out to the store, and when you get to the store, the food's going to be gone. I don't want to sound like a gloom and doomer here, but, but I think it's time for us to start thinking about these issues. And 5G is a big issue too, and I don't know if you've talked about that at all here, but that would be worth a discussion. I have some concerns about that.
So I, I really wanted Bill to speak to this, because we did at one time, if everybody remembers, the tornado that came through Dexter. It was very real for our township. And at that time, we did not have a, um, one of those emergency sound systems out on, is it at Tornado Center? It was, the only one that we had was at, at the park. At, um, at, at the trailer park. We didn't have it anywhere else. So where was it that we put it in? Because we had to spend the extra money to put one in.
Yep. So we have two tornado sirens in Northfield Township. You have one at Barker and 23, and then you also have one over here at Six Mile and US-23. But, uh, another kind of new thing that's coming up for all of Washtenaw County, um, and I'm not sure if Commissioner Schink is aware of this or not, but we're going to a county-wide emergency notification system. Some of you are already part of that in Northfield Township as NICSIL, and this is just the next step up. If you're part of it, NICSIL, right now in Northfield Township, you will automatically blend in, but it gives us much, much more expansive opportunities to notify the public, to notify first responders, to notify... Uh, no, that's more of an emergency management operation. But getting back to, I don't know if you were specifically talking about the coronavirus, I can tell you that the state public health works really, really hard on that, and going all the way back to SARS and the bird flu and all that stuff. The region too south, which is where we are at, works constantly planning for that. We're very, very fortunate, the health systems that we have in our area and, uh, the, uh, the ambulance service, Here and Valley Ambulance, they're known statewide for being able to, you know, respond to emergencies like this. So while no, nobody is ready for the bad, bad one, I, I think we do a little bit better. And since the tornadoes in Dexter, our communication systems in Washtenaw County is excellent, so.
Um, to ask, to answer the broadband, um, I know a number of our board members have received this. This was from the Washtenaw County Broadband Task Force, uh, to, uh, and we were supposed to respond by March 16th. I actually had to put this in my purse so I could respond to it. And they are looking for a response. Um, I don't know if this went out countywide, but it did go out to our board members to respond to it in regards to, um, uh, it is a survey for internet and everything. So I know in, in the Ag area, the, yeah, please fill it out. It's very important. In the Ag area, there is no internet connection, hardly. Um, if you can even get AT&amp;T, you're lucky. And in some areas, you don't even have cable, so. No, you don't. I don't. I know that. But I think that they ask all that. This came from Washtenaw County. The broadband task force. I, someone said that they've received them. Okay. Okay. No, March 16th. Respond by March 16th. Yeah, so we, we need to set up for our board meeting. And, Udo, I'll have you say one more.
When are we getting back to this gentleman's request and my requests in several years for the task force? Please. Every major issue here, we should bring this up.
Okay. Does this?